I'd like to call this special meeting of the Savannah City Council to order. Will everyone please stand? We will have a moment of silence followed by a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a special meeting called for the purpose of discussing the international travel policy and an invitation to the world of Austria. But before we begin, I would like to announce that Georgia Power had delivered their franchise taxes in the amount of $7,270,993.91. We want to thank them very much. It was certainly helpful.
That's the check?
This is the check.
I want to see the million dollars. Seven million dollars. What's this money?
All right. As I said, this meeting is called to allow council members to express their concerns about the international travel policy and the well strip. Who wants to be the first to speak?
Thank you, sir.
You just asked him, who wants to be first?
I'd like for you, Mr. Mayor, if you would explain the trip, please.
Um, you have a packet that I sent to the council on 2/16/10 which explains the chronology of the trip. On December the 7th, I sent a memo to council members and the city manager that I received from Steve Green, who is the Chair of the Savannah Post Authority and who is working with Craig Lesser, who is a consultant for the Savannah Economic Development Authority, outlining and detailing why we should pursue this. And then there was a timeline on the back attached to it. Because I wanted the council to be informed, I had a note. I asked Shurante to send it out with a note to reply ASAP. So, the purpose of the trip, and if anyone in the media that have one of these, I'd be happy to give you one. But the purpose of the trip is to respond to an invitation from the mayor of Wells to attend their conference on energy and sustainability projects that they have. Every year, they have had a successful fair. And there's information in that memo that I sent out to you indicating the topics of that fair and the invitation letter from the mayor. My response, a response from CETA encouraging me to respond. I had already responded, and they didn't know that I had to respond. So you have the information on this trip and what it means in terms of the possibility of having a conference on renewable energy in Savannah, Georgia. Savannah is the gateway out of the country for pellets that are being produced to burn as energy to replace coal in the electric plants of Europe. We have the Hurdy Foundation here, who is at the forefront of doing research on renewable energy and the use of biofuels. And we just simply thought that this was a good thing if we could create an international partnership with Wells and then have a conference here in the fall of 2011. And all of that is in the memo that you have.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask a question, starting off with that. You sent this memo out on December the 7th at 9:35 a.m. And 10 minutes later, I responded as you had requested. And I wrote, the same day, 10 minutes later, "I don't have a problem with this partnership. I would ask if there's a council delegation that will be attending, and if so, we need to discuss amongst ourselves immediately who will be sent on this mission because time is of the essence. Council cannot drag their feet." The next time I heard about the trip from Wells was 66 days later, when you announced in the very last split-second moment of council last week that you and Alderman Stuber would be attending the conference in Wells. I don't think you were in doubt, but I did not know that we had caucused amongst this council to decide if another member was going to be approved to go on that trip. And I just raised a question that with 66 days and no discussion at all about this trip, and we went through a budget workshop, we went through council retreat, we went through numerous city council meetings and other workshops, and no one ever mentioned to us that there would be somebody other than you from this council that would be attending this trip. It just raises some serious concerns about the travel policy that we put in place in December 2008 to prevent such things as this from ever occurring again. So I'd like some comments and some understanding on how, one, Alderman Stuber is attending this conference with you, and, two, why 66 days of no correspondence with council about anything more on the Wells trip since the time you released that memo till now?
During that 66 days, you had ample opportunity to express your concern. So if you want to cast dispersions on me, I will turn it right around and ask you, if this was so important for you, why during that 66 days, didn't you say, Otis, I sent you an email asking for some discussion, and I haven't heard from you? When are we going to discuss it? That certainly would have been a proper way to do it. And I think that you are now on some kind of path that is going to be less than positive. And so, again, if you're going to raise the 66 days, you had ample time, as a council member, and the most vocal of the eight council members to raise the question, "Mr. Mayor, I sent you an email about the memo that you sent me. What are we going to do about it?"
Mr. Mayor, I would...
May I respond since...
Absolutely, and then I want to, too.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I fully respect that, but this council unanimously passed a travel policy.
That's right.
It clearly stated that we had to approve a resolution of any kind of international agreement or travel by our council. And if we, if you knew during any of that time that you were choosing another person to go on a trip, for whatever purpose, we should have been notified. And unfortunately, we were not notified. Now, I would disagree that I'm the most vocal member of the council. I think that I have genuine concerns about this because we put that travel policy in place to try and prevent incidents from occurring that were, that happened after the China trip. And I think that if you, as the mayor, knew that you were going to take additional members of the council, then we should have been notified at some point, other than a declaration at the end of the last meeting.
All right, Mr. Thomas, if you want to say that I violated the policy and that was wrong, then I'm man enough to say that, okay, I did. Now where do we go from here with this? What do we want to achieve?
I kind of felt that your response would be similar to that.
That's right.
Because...
Let's move on. I made a mistake, according to you?
Well, are you going to continue to make the mistakes, Mr. Mayor?
But that's not your business.
No, it is. It is my business.
Mr. Mayor...
Because a travel policy, and I'm very respectful, a travel policy that this council unanimously passed, unanimously passed...
No, not unanimously, because I didn't. Go ahead, go ahead.
The travel policy that the council passed unanimously...
All right. We did pass it unanimously.
Should be, should be followed. If we're going to put rules in place for our employees and our residents of this city to follow, we should follow the rules that we put in place for ourselves to begin with.
All right. Am I going to get a lecture, or are we going to make a decision about this trip and move on?
You're the professor, I'm not...
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, can we not be placed in a classroom with a teacher-student relationship? And can we speak and allow everyone to speak what's on their mind in a professional and straightforward manner so that we can reassure the public that we are trying to build public trust, we are trying to be transparent and accountable? On December 18th, 2008, this city council unanimously adopted the travel policy. Travel policy was discussed on pages 17 through pages 30. The policy says it shall apply to the mayor and city council members. The effective date was December 18th, 2008. It was adopted and approved by the mayor and council and city manager on December 18th, 2008. The policy standards provide, see, international travel and international sister-city and intercity agreements must be approved by a resolution adopted by the mayor and alderman. Now you have placed us in the most uncomfortable and precarious position of having scheduled a trip, that you now have given us correspondence that you have had since May of last year. Six months that we weren't informed about this trip, and then Alderman Stuber has been included in this trip without any discussion of this council. Alderman Stuber was one of the proponents and authors of the travel policy. Regardless of whether he was invited or not, he knew himself that the matter had to be discussed and brought before council. It's our policy. It's the law. No one is above the law. We all are accountable to the people and to the law. Now, the precarious position we are placed in, if you're talking about moving forward, is Alderman Stuber has already purchased an international flight ticket, and I'm sure it made other arrangements. And this had to have been, or was supposed to have been, approved by a resolution of council prior to any expenditures. Clearly, things have been done inappropriately and in the wrong order. And how can we have faith and confidence in these trips and what members are doing of city council, and then expect the public to have faith and confidence in these trips if we're playing a hide-and-seek game? And one step further is, only by written request did I find out last year that the trip to Sweden, that additional expenses came out of the general fund, not our travel policy, the general fund. Over $14,000 came out of the general fund, but the numbers that were reported to the newspaper on our travel policy showed Alderman Sprague as having spent less money than I, which is not true, which she readily admits. Why wasn't that money made transparent and accountable to the people? The people at large have a right to know. Who is spending what on their public dime? It's not our money, and it's not our seat. And they have a right to know. So not only do we have that incident, now we have this incident. My public, my faith and trust has been eroded. So I can imagine how the people at large feel.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Excuse me. My comments about this is this. I think we're here this morning to discuss how this is going to be resolved. I appreciate the fact that you've acknowledged that you made a mistake in terms of the process and the procedure, and I think that's admirable. However, I go back to what's been said by the previous two aldermen, and I think that without the resolution of council, I don't think we're in a position to stop anyone from traveling on their own dime. But I don't think without a resolution of this council, the city from any funds should fund the trip to the other alderman without resolution.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I may, because you have an agenda here, and you only have one item on it.
That's all there is.
But I think we should discuss the entire travel policy myself, because this is not the only area in the travel policy that I personally question. And if I'm in order, I would like to just add to this agenda the discussion of the travel policy in this entire... If I'm in order.
We are discussing the travel policy. The international travel policy is a subset of the council policy on travel.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I do believe that, and correct me if I'm incorrect, when a special call meeting, when a special meeting of a body is called, it is for a specific purpose, and it deals in this meeting specifically with international travel policy. And I think we should adhere to that. However, I think that at a later date, Mr. Jones's request could be responded to. Am I correct?
You're absolutely right, and I would certainly welcome that discussion of the travel policy in general. But not today.
Okay, that's all I have to ask.
Thanks for that, lady.
Mr. Johnson?
I'm kind of perplexed. We're just kind of sitting here and kind of waiting to see what the next move is going to be. I was one of the three authors, I guess, appointed to this committee to work out a travel policy for the city council. I remember distinctly, it did not apply to the mayor. If those were the minutes, the minutes were incorrect. It was a policy for council members as it related to how we wanted to conduct ourselves relating travel.
The minutes stipulated that Felsa...
Okay. Mr. Felsa read something saying it was for the mayor and council, and so that was incorrect.
That's straight from the minutes, Alderman Johnson.
Well, it was for the city council.
I'm not disagreeing that the mayor should go on this trip. Let me be perfectly...
Well, I mean, I'm just...
Go ahead, go ahead.
So, it's for the city council. The fact is, I guess, that for whatever reason, the notification or the communication process had not occurred. I'm not sure that it was the mayor's responsibility to notify the council, because he was not affected by the policy. Now, Alderman Stuber is a person who co-authored it, and obviously would have had the responsibility of coming back to this council and going through whatever due diligence. The fact is, he didn't.
He raised, he raised that with me.
Right. The fact was, he didn't. So now, what do we do? The mayor is going to Austria. The question is, is Larry Stuber going to Austria by the city, on the city's dime, on his own dime? And that, in the end, that's the end of it. I mean, you know...
Dan, that's what I just said.
I mean, because we're sitting here, kind of going back and forth and back and forth. I mean, you know, and it's bringing up a whole bunch of memories that I'm just very uncomfortable with in our recent history. But yeah, I think there's just a question we need to be able to answer, and then this whole thing is finished. I mean, what I'm concerned about is, obviously, we're kind of on this fact-finding, you know, gotcha type of mentality now that is really festering, that, you know, now we're feeling like it's an atmosphere of distrust that is really not, it's not, it's not positive. It's not positive, and it doesn't help us as we move forward. So I mean, really, we just have, Mr. Mayor, in my mind, one question and one question only to answer.
I just said...
The other end of it is, I mean, I feel very uncomfortable reading the morning news and seeing Alderman have released information to the media. I mean, that's another subset of this. I mean, you know, if we have issues, then obviously, we should be able to handle those issues amongst ourselves and to ourselves, and be able to work them out one way or another. I mean, other than this, this is really kind of a debacle, and I'm just, I'm really unfortunate to be a part of it.
That's why, at the end of the meeting, when I realized I had made an error and people were going to exploit that error, I immediately called for this special meeting.
Right.
And it has just escalated on other people's agendas to where we are right now.
There's only one question in my mind.
But as soon, when the meeting was over, and Larry Stuber was being interviewed, and then I saw Tony go over there to talk to the media, I said, oh, hell is going to break loose. I went right next door and said, we're going to have a special call meeting to deal with this. So that's why we're here, to rectify that mistake. Now, we can just beat the hell out of this if we want to, but that is where we are. Now we've got one choice to make.
That's right.
Is Stuber going as a representative of the city or not? And he has, for this conference, more expertise than anybody else on this conference.
Without a doubt.
Because he is an engineer, he is working with the state as a representative of the city on environmental issues, and he has been a co-chair with our mayor pro temp on working on the international cabinet. So y'all can make whatever decision y'all make. But this is why we're here today, not to beat up on anybody, not to castigate anybody, but to try to correct an error. And that's the way it should have been taken from the beginning.
You didn't say that.
Ted.
I want to, I want to bring some resolve to this, Mr. Mayor. You asked, what, where do we go from here? My recommendation is that this council do not lose the focus of what this is all about, and that is that what the Wells Conference, if we're able to capture that, will bring to the community. And that it'd be the primary focus. You have said, well, you know, if that was the case, you will take responsibility. Well, my thing is, if we go back to when we were talking at the retreat, we said that we would talk with each other. Unfortunately, we have not been doing that. But my thing is, I think that Mr. Stuber should go on this trip to represent our city, in light of the fact, too, that the president is coming, and you may have to delay your, and at least governments want to meet other people in governments. And according to the schedule that you sent out, there is something that is happening on the day that you're supposed to be there, and will look horrible for us to not have someone representing this mayor and city council. So if a motion is in order, my motion is that we approve Larry going to Wells.
Discussion? Wait a minute, wait a minute.
All right.
There were hands up prior to the... I want to, I want to address, this has nothing to do with an agenda. This has to do with you sending out a memo on December the 7th. And when I say "you," I'm speaking to the mayor, sending out a memo on December the 7th and a reply that was not replied to. This council put in place a travel policy to prevent any misunderstandings such as what we're in today. You can call it an agenda, and you can demonize it any way you want to, but I'd still like to get an answer to my question. How did Alderman Stuber get involved in this trip and basically be appointed to go? I don't disagree that Alderman Stuber brings value to that trip to Austria. However, the process was not followed. Now you've come back and said, I aired. You never said you aired when you called this meeting last week. And this, "I did it, what you going to do about it" mentality, if we're going to have communications from the council, how is that showing respect for this council as a whole if this is, basically plays itself out to be constant? I agree. Attitude here is not helping us reach any altitude.
Mr. Mayor?
And I really want to stress that. The attitude is not helping us reach a positive altitude. And by that, I'm saying, and Alderman Johnson and Van and every member of this council knows that we have no objection whatsoever to our mayor representing us...
Absolutely.
...at this conference. So that's the end of that part of the discussion. The discussion is how, why, when, and where Alderman Stuber came into this discussion. Now, we all bring expertise to the table. This particular argument could have been made for any conference around the world for Alderman Stuber, because he's involved in the international travel group that is ongoing. So it is a fallacy and an erroneous conclusion automatically, without discussion, that he should be an alderman going on this trip. And furthermore, I also think that there is no need for a second Savani and Alderman going on this trip. We have a duty right now, in these economic times, to be fruitful. We have budgeted for outcomes, we have held city employee raises back. We should, as Alderman Jones has said before, we should show by example our own restraint. Now, any agreement, economic development, memorandum of understanding, anything that comes out of this meeting between City of Savannah and Wells of Austria can be signed by our mayor. Our mayor has that power, and we wish him well, and we want that to happen. But there is no economic need for us to have the additional expenditure of a second person from city council going on this trip, period.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make some further comments, and that is this. Am I clear in understanding that the purpose of this trip is to share the Savannah story and also hopefully attract the conference here to Savannah?
That is correct.
Can that mission not be accomplished by you alone, or the chamber, or the other persons that are going on that trip to tell the Savannah story? And also, I need to piggyback on that. I realize now that you have modified your timeline for Austria. When do you now expect to be leaving and arriving there, sir?
I expect to leave Savannah on the 3rd.
You're not going to leave until the 3rd?
Well, the president is going to be here on the 2nd, and I'm going to be here.
Yes, sir. So you're leaving on the 3rd?
I'm leaving on the 3rd.
And, no, and I said, when do you expect? I don't know the timeline for travel there. When will you arrive here, sir?
I'll arrive the next day.
On the 4th?
On the 4th. And that is when we have the...
The discussions...
That is correct.
Exactly. That is when the discussion is going. I was looking through the agenda, that's why I'm asking the questions...
That's correct.
...and the sequence of which I'm asking him. So you will be there on the 4th to have the discussion with the Wells officials on the joint Wells initiative and the next steps, which to me is the important thing. And based on that conclusion, I see no need for anybody but you going. That's my conclusion.
Well, there is a, there is a reception that's been planned on the 2nd, and we should have representation there.
Savannah will be represented.
But, you know, this is in your hands.
Yes, sir.
But, but I can tell you...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
There's a motion on the floor.
There is a motion on the floor. Any further discussion on the motion?
Sure, I'd like my question answered. It hasn't been answered. I'd like to know how Alderman Stuber got involved in this trip.
I just told you.
No, you didn't.
Maybe Larry can tell us.
I certainly would like to hear from Alderman Stuber, because he's awful quiet.
I don't, I don't really think he needs to get involved in that.
Mr. Mayor, let's let him make that decision.
All right.
He's involved. This... This meeting today is about him.
What is your question? Somebody has some questions?
Then Alderman Thomas has asked you a question.
What is the question? I'd like to know how you got involved in this trip.
When, where, how?
This specific trip to Wells. You don't have to stand up. We can all sit down. No, I want to answer the question. And if we all give me the courtesy of answering. I've asked, yes. Okay. This is the written history, my involvement in helping the mayor plan this trip.
Don't shit at me.
I'll take this initiative, this is what I call the. January the 6th, the mayor of Toronto on behalf of the mayor.
He's placing it on everybody's desk.
Sent me an email asking me to come to a meeting with Greg Lesser, Steve Green, Andrea Silverman, and Edna Jackson. And I responded and attended that meeting on January the 8th. Ma'am? Okay. Yes, ma'am. On January the 8th, I attended the meeting, uh, with Andrea Silverman, Edna Jackson, the mayor, Greg Lesser, and Steve Green. As a result of that meeting, there was no invitation for me to join the group at that time, offered help. The next two to three weeks, I, I helped recruit some of the delegates that are going on the trip, energy companies, 'cause that's what the focus of this trip is. On January the 25th, I got an email from, on behalf of the mayor, from Sheronte to, uh, it says he is the mayor, when he says "he," referring to the mayor, is also requesting to know if you would like to serve as part of the delegation. That was January 25th. I asked for a meeting on January the 28th with Andrea Silverman, Edna Jackson, and the mayor, to discuss the delegation as it was, as it was evolving. And by that time, we had Georgia Power, Southern LNG, and there was, uh, for a short time, Dennis Blackburn, who's an international, uh, Switzerland citizen, was considering helping the delegation. At that meeting, uh, as a result of the January 25th invite to join the delegation, I asked the mayor, I said, can I, do you think I can be of some help? We had a discussion, and we, in my opinion, we all mutually agreed I could be helpful. And, uh, the mayor then said, well, then go buy your ticket, or go tell Sheronte to order the ticket. Okay? Now, at that point, I probably erred, uh, because I knew about the policy. I knew that, that mayor and council had to approve this. But on the other hand, I'm, I'm loyal to the mayor. I mean, he's my, I report to him. And, and, uh, I, I just simply was not going to go running around behind the mayor's back.
Right, it's.
Now, wait, let me finish my answer. Now, uh, we, the, the, the delegation at that point, on the 29th, when the ticket was bought, was about ninety percent complete, and it finally came to completion on, uh, at a meeting in the mayor's office on January the, I'm sorry, uh, February the 9th. The delegation, uh, the people attending that meeting was Kathy Hill, Georgia Power, Jill Stuckey, State of Georgia Center for Innovation, Energy Innovation, Andrea Silverman, Edna Jackson, the mayor, me, and Chris Hume, the CEO of the local LNG facility, Southern Natural, uh, yeah, Southern Natural.
Liquid, nat.
Liquid, nat. Uh, and at that meeting, uh, we discussed, uh, how we were going to pursue the 2011 conference here in Savannah, Georgia, in, in partnership with Wells. And we scheduled at that meeting a follow-up meeting for March the 15th. And the mayor, after that meeting, agreed to announce, make this announcement, uh, as he did, uh, on February the 11th. Now that is the extent of my involvement. Is that accurate? Is that your accurate recollection?
That's right.
May I make a?
Cliff, or go ahead, I'll defer.
May I have a, a, a opportunity to just say one thing? It seems as if, it seems as if, uh, plans were being made for this trip and, uh, to work with this international group, uh, as you just stated. And I think, to our surprise, that during the course of the discussions, uh, none of us were aware of anything you just said. None of us, at least I wasn't, I can't speak for the rest of the council. But if we are going to pursue any of this as a group, as a council, then let us know step by step what is going on. I, I understand if we had known, at least on my part, I would not be sitting here today discussing. But I consider everything that's going on here the day after the fact. That's just the way it is. And if we talk about openness and transparency and this sort of thing, then, uh, somewhere or somehow, someone is going to have to do a little more communicating with the rest of us. It's as simple as that, in my opinion. I am of the understanding, and I always have been, because I've been here and I've seen, uh, seen the work. And they have been doing this type of work ever since I've been on council. Uh, this is a, a new day for Savannah City Council, because if anyone was involved in going abroad to discuss economic progress or anything else, it has always been the mayor. Uh, we never had this discussion when I worked here with, uh, Mayor Floyd Adams. So it's a new day, and we have to deal with it, I guess, in that particular matter. But based on the, the information that was just provided by Alderman Stuber, I think, uh, we would have been in a better position to understand all of this if someone had been communicating with us along the way. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Jones.
Karma is real, and there is a question, the question is on the floor.
There's an additional discussion.
Well, I want everybody to have their say, so, uh, Felser?
Alderman Stuber, I accept exactly the facts as you've laid them out, and do not question that. What bothers me is your phrase that you did not want to appear as if you were running around the mayor. It's not running around the mayor, it's following the law that you helped write. No one is above the law. If the mayor tells you to do X, and you know that the council has followed a po- has enacted a policy of Y, it may have slipped his mind, and you knew to bring it to us for discussion per, there, we have to adopt a resolution. So it's not running around the mayor, it's following the law and adhering to the law as it is written. That's, the crux of the matter is, we have to be able to trust each other, and if we can't trust each other, how do we expect the public to trust us? It's a valid point, and it's eroding. Once again, your addition to the trip, we now know is going to cost over $3,000. We now know from documents that were released from the Sweden trip, that the extensive delegation that went there was $14,000 more than was disclosed in the information released to the newspaper. So there are smoke and mirrors and hide and seek, or whatever you want to call it, going on, that needs to be shed in the light of the day, transparent, accountable, and communicate. Probably, we wouldn't be here today if the matter had been brought to us and discussed to us. Every other thing, we get tons of paperwork and PowerPoint presentations and lots and lots of notice, but somehow, this ticket and travel expenditure, and your going abroad for a week to Austria was left off of the radar of telling us. That's disappointing.
I want to go back to my response on December the 7th, uh, to the mayor's office, as the mayor had requested. And I want to go back to the very first sentence that says, I do not have a problem with this partnership. What I did ask at that time was if we were going to consider sending other members of this council to let us know in a timely fashion, so that we, the council, could caucus together and decide who we thought those persons would be, and if there were recommendations because of people's qualifications or their interest in fields, then those could have been bought into consideration. The council could have vetted this and decided this is somebody that we want to send to support our mayor in this partnership agreement. That didn't happen. It's been pointed out that the mayor, the mayor pointed out that he believes he erred in this. Okay, I accept that. But the problem is, is this, this, there should be some transparency, there should be communications on these initiatives, and they should not be shuffled in emails between select people and not shared with the rest of the council when it involves the council dollars and council policy. And I go back to the process. I think that this is wrong, I think this wasn't handled right. You know, the mayor said, what are you gonna do? I don't know what we could do. I don't know what I, if I'd want to do anything, but what I would want is some assurances that on the next trip, because you can bet that there's one in the hopper somewhere, that on the next trip, that there be better communications with this council as a whole, so that we could all be a part and embrace these initiatives, so that we could build these partnerships around the world, which I think we all agree. But if we're not going to honor the travel policy, and we're going to find loopholes in it and go around each other's backs, why don't we repeal it? Why don't we get rid of the travel policy and just let everybody do whatever they want to, and then be answered, uh, be answered to the voters in four years when it comes to how much money they're spending on what trips that they're doing? Because I don't want to pretend, for the voter's sake, that we have a travel policy that governs us to be transparent, when that's not what, that, that's not the policy, and that's not what's occurring. I would hope that in the future, that we would take notice in a lot clearer communications with each other when it comes to this kind of travel or any kind of initiative that could involve, um, someone going on that trip. No one, I, I don't know of anyone on this council that says the mayor shouldn't go to Wells, Austria, to support our city and to do this, any mayor. But we're not just talking now, we're talking about future administrations. This administration has prided itself in communications and made it a priority, that our staff communicate with us, but we have failed ourselves at doing it. And, you know, it can be classed as an agenda, it could be labeled as an agenda, but the fact is, is we've got to do a better job. And I, I don't feel good about this. This is wrong, this should not have happened. It looks like we put a protect, you know, we tried to put a protective measure in December 2008, and it's failed, um, and I just, I, I hope that we never see this again.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
This is not addressed to you, this is addressed specifically to Alderman Stuber. Alderman Stuber, I feel very badly that you see the mayor as your boss and that you don't honor us as your colleagues. And I want to say that to you publicly, that if that's how you feel, you know, it's sad, because you have to work with all nine, all the rest of us, all eight of us. And you have clearly stated here this morning that, like, we don't count. And you do know the policy, and you do know you are part of the author, one of the main authors of the policy. And, and you know, to sit here and say, like, you're gonna discount us because of what the mayor said, that's disrespectful, and I will not. I give respect, but I command it back at all levels, just like when you threw that paper on my desk, I put it right back on yours, till you placed it properly on my desk, as you had done for everyone else. So please, please assure me that respect is due respect, and I will respect you. But I had to say that publicly, because I wanted to be on the public record. Thank you much.
Mr. Mayor.
Somebody called a question.
I've been, I've been doing it for the last fifteen minutes.
Thank you, called a question.
Karma is real, Alderman Stuber. It's real.
I didn't hear that.
They're calling the question.
Oh, okay. Would you repeat the motion?
Alderman Stuber, he said karma is real.
Okay.
Would you repeat the motion?
The motion is that the city council approve Alderman Stuber to take the trip to Wells, Austria as a part of this, this delegation.
You want us to go to the board, sir?
All right.
Who's my yes?
The motion carries six to two.
Alderman Thomas hasn't voted.
I'm voting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did I get it there?
All right, one, two.
Alderman Osborne has not voted.
I did over, I traced it.
Well, anyway, seven. It won't make a difference anyway.
But mine was no for the record.
All right, no for the record, Felser, Osborne, and Thomas. Motion carries.
Wait a second.
No, Tom, he voted for it.
Oh, you did?
I did.
He voted for it.